Is that the doing the video?
Yes, so we're streaming now.
Okay.
One of the second signature, right?
I you do marry. I know.
Like the shirt, Mayor.
Yeah, I uh. To go get uh those in. Which apparently is our old people.
Oh, they moved, yeah.
And I guess there's a new new game of town, but I didn't get the memo. So nice scene throughout. Right next to the graveyard.
That's a bad omen.
I don't know what those are from. I they I for four years, those have been up here. I think they're from when they had meetings, like other meetings here.
I'm gonna give I'm gonna give Chris Chandler the double.
Okay. I mean, it's very considerate, but I've never actually never known that this was like, you know.
Take the head back.
Yeah, exactly.
I just like my I just like my.
We started putting the mask on.
During COVID, yeah. Yeah.
It's nice when there's a lot of hinking.
Exactly, that's right.
Do you want to be?
Pardon? Where you had too much coffee in my hand?
Just you have to get back and he starts with the. We need a second signature which we match, right? No, thank you for calling that to my attention. Okay, we ready? Okay, at being nine AM, I will call this special meeting of the Village Board of Peoria Heights to order if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and uh but first we'll do a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Turner, would you call the roll?
Trustee Steinwelle?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Simmons?
Present.
Trustee DeVore?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Trustee Reiker?
Present.
Okay, thank you all for coming. Before we go to comments from the audience, I wanted to read a letter that Chief Decker had asked me to read at this meeting. He sent it to me last night, so I'll just quickly read through this. So, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, appointment of the Fire Chief of Peoria Heights, Mayor Wigginton and Board of Trustee members. I was informed at approximately ten AM, May twenty-third, that there would be a special trustee meeting held on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, at nine AM. This information was surprising because I have historically received all agenda and meeting announcements via email when the agendas are posted in their normal legal fashion. For this meeting, I was not notified via email. This is the only variation from normal practice, but it is alarming because this meeting is regarding my employment contract. I trusted any decision regarding not reappointing me as Fire Chief would have been preceded by conversations about my performance and any complaints that have been made against me, but I have received no complaints, negative performance evaluations, or requests from board members. Due to the short notice, I am unavailable to be in attendance this morning, but I am writing this email to offer my thoughts regarding your decision. I was surprised to be called into an executive session on May twelfth at six twenty-eight PM, but I quickly made myself available and arrived as soon as possible. I was asked routine questions regarding my normal work hours and training for a department, but received no disagreement when I answered those questions. I left the meeting feeling good and believed their stated intentions of simply wanting to ask questions. I then met Mayor Wigginton on Wednesday, May fourteenth, at nine forty-five, where I was told the board was unwilling to conform my appointment. I was understandably surprised and asked him why this decision was being made, but was given not given any information. Mayor Wigginton simply stated the board was just unwilling to offer another contract. So I tried to understand how this was possible. I asked Mayor Wigginton what the board plans to do or who they plan to appoint. He stated he had no idea. This news was shocking to me. In November, twenty-twenty-three, I left an employer where I was making close to double the salary and benefits because I wanted to assist an area department that was going through a very difficult time. I felt my experience on the East Peoria City Council would give me an advantage and assist in making things better for Peoria Heights. I was given three basic objectives by Mayor Phelan and the Village Board members. One, evaluate the current service that is being provided to the residents of Peoria Heights. Two, offer suggestions and a plan to improve the service level provided by the Fire Department. Three, work with firefighters, village administrator, Villa Board to implement the changes I believe that are willing needed to make the village safer for the residents, visitors, and business owners. Over the past eighteen months, we have increased membership by two-thirds, received an SCBA grant for two hundred thousand dollars, received a grant for the ply movement system. With the Village Board approval, we have worked to create a police and fire commission and establish the first full-time firefighter list, implemented a daily engine response crew, lowered the number of missed or ignored calls for assistance to zero. Reconnected and improved our relationship with the Peoria Fire Department. This is this cost the Peoria Heights residents nothing but was allowed us to more often meet NFPA standards for minimum response personnel response times within eight to nine minutes of notification. We started routine live-fire training with Peoria Fire Training Tower, which was stopped when Chief Walters retired. Worked with our members to obtain their Class B driver's license, which is a state law for firefighters in Illinois to drive fire apparatus. We established an expectation of excellence in EMS response and treatment. There are many others, but there uh these are some of the main highlights. Since coming to Peoria Heights, I have felt handcuffed, often learning that information was whispered to board members from disgruntled and former firefighters to stop the progress of the department. Undermining the chain of command in the Fire Department is a serious offense to our code of ethics. Being a city commissioner, I would not work to undermine the city department heads. As a commissioner, I have received phone calls and complaints from employees, but I have either encouraged the employee to speak with the supervisor, or I would take that information to the department head or city commissioner over that department. Improvements can't be made if the department head is unaware of the complaints. To my fellow firefighters, supportive residents, and those whom I have worked closely with since coming to the village, thank you. Your support and recognition for these efforts may show efforts made show me that my time here has not been wasted. Your kind words at the recent Village Board meetings, as well as your emails, texts, and phone calls have been overwhelming. I will continue to make myself available to the members of the department when possible. I am extremely proud of all our members, and I appreciate your respect, dedication, and friendship. I am willing to meet with any board member to answer questions you have in private or public. I care about the firefighters in Peoria Heights, and I'm proud of the enormous improvements we have made in such a short time. While I am proud of our accomplishments, there is much more to be done. Thank you. Daniel S. Decker, Fire Chief, Peoria Heights Fire Department. So with that, I will open the floor to public comment. Please limit your uh you know, please give your name, address, and limit your talking time about five minutes. Thanks.
Raylock, Carthage, Illinois, on the area. Everything Dan said in there is true, and I questioned from what I heard last week, how do you let an employee go and not give them a reason, something they won't look forward to, to work on, to be reevaluated, et cetera? Just let go and that's it. It's a person of the tissue. It it just reeks to me of way too much little chit-chat behind the lines of people who aren't out there doing the job, knowing the job. And when we charged him with the duty, and all of you who were up there except you two, charged him with the duty, voted yes on the duty, took it so far as to get a line item budget agreed on and had him start forward and then jerk the damn rugs from underneath him. I don't know what you expect of a human. You wouldn't expect that we'd done to you. How can you do that to someone else?
Thank you, Ray. Chief Walters?
My name is Greg Walters, eight hundred East Toledo, Peoria Heights, retired Fire Chief of Peoria Heights Fire Department, currently Chairman of the Police and Fire Commission for the Village of Peoria Heights. I have a, as usual, I have a prepared statement. I have a tendency to get very wrapped up in what I'm saying, so I keep it on paper so I don't get off the subject. Mayor and Village trustees, you were elected to make informed decisions on behalf of the citizens of Peoria Heights, not misinformed decisions. It appears from what I've been able to gather that you are basing your decision on Chief Decker's fate, on the words of a few malcontented or politically motivated individuals who appear to have an ax to grind. That's not a cause for his removal. I know this man, as you do not. I've worked with this man. He has done an exemplary job in the short time he has been with us and deserves to be retained. He has adapted to and responded to every change and roadblock created by the Village Board, past and present, in a timely and professional manner, and he has made good the promises he made when hired. This whole affair has been shrouded in secrecy for whatever reason, not just to the public, but to Chief Decker as well. You have not returned his phone calls, his emails, his texts. You have kept him completely in the dark. He had less than twenty-four hours' notice of this meeting. He was notified at ten o'clock yesterday in a stairwell. As a result of the short notice, Chief Decker was unable to rearrange his schedule to attend today due to a previous commitment. From my perspective, this is very shady. This is very disrespectful to this man. As you any of you care to explain to this audience here how and why we got to this? What's led to this? We are clueless and deserve to know why this good man, in our opinion, is being cast out. And I throw it back to you at this moment. If anybody cares to comment on it, they want to know, because they don't.
Thank you, Chief, and I.
I'm not done, but I mean, if you.
Yeah, I so I think I what I, you know, I've told the trustees, I think they are gonna touch on that a little bit, but I want you guys to, you know, tell us how you feel, and then they'll talk a little later.
Very well, thank you. There is no one within this department that is certified or qualified to step up into that position and take over the reins. You don't have a succession plan. This is not, from my perspective, very well thought out. If you let him go, there would be a great that would be a great mistake that falls directly on your shoulders, but it's the citizens of Peoria Heights that pays the price. And this would once again send this department into a tailspin and could severely hamper PHFD's ability to provide the emergency response your constituents deserve. Enough is enough. That being said, I respectfully request that you renew Fire Chief Decker's contract. After I wrote this, I got to thinking a little bit, okay? Not knowing what you know, we may want to come up with a compromise. If there's still overwhelming opposition to this, to keeping him for whatever reason, I would like to offer a compromise, a one-year contract extension. This would ensure the Fire Department continues running smoothly. It could give him time to implement it could give you guys a time to implement a succession plan or allow you to see that he is what we say he is. He's the man for the job. And I'm not familiar whether you guys know or not the state requirements for a paid Fire Chief in the state of Illinois. I hope you have seen that, because it's pretty extensive. And Chief Decker holds all those certifications. He's extremely qualified, and he's loved by the personnel that work for him. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Reiker?
Norm Reiker, fifty sixteen Glen Elm Drive. The only thing I got to say is, just a few months ago, I sat here with my wife and a whole bunch of other people at a meet the candidates night, and I heard Nate Steinwelle, Teresa Simmons, and Jennifer Reiker run on the platform of protecting the Fire Department, keeping it here, and it appears you guys have lied. As usual, politicians, they get in, they do, they say one thing, and they do the opposite. You people were elected to represent me and everyone out here that lives in the Heights to do what we want, not what you want, what we want, and you're not listening. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chief.
Good morning. It's kind of hard to plan for a nine o'clock meeting, finding out about at two o'clock in the afternoon the next day. For those of you in the audience, esteemed trustees, Mayor Wigginton, my name's John Harris. Again, I'm an engineer, emergency medical technician for the Peoria Heights Fire Department. I've been here three and a half years, as I said. Uh Tuesday night, just a couple of things that I want to hit on that I felt that I missed, but that I also want to add. First, I'll start. When candidates were being elected, we, as firefighters, had some candidates stop in and talk to us. It actually happened more than once, and each one said they were going to support us and that they were gonna do what was best for us. And I remember distinctly, it wasn't me, but one of our firefighters said, well, we'll see how true that is. Today's the day to see how true that is. Today's the day if you do what supports us or not. I said Tuesday night, we would like Fire Chief Decker retained, not just me, but every single firefighter that walks through those doors, day in and day out, to respond to your homes, your friends' homes, and the citizens' homes within this great town. Mayor Wigginton, you read a letter from Chief Decker regarding improvements within the Fire Department. Chief Reiker, when he read Chief Walters's letter Tuesday night, talked about the plumb event system. When I started here three and a half years ago, this was not a thing. Okay, diesel exhaust fumes cause cancer. When we would go on calls before Chief Decker would be here, fire up the trucks, if we had the door open to Village Hall, as we routinely did because we enjoyed the visitors of this town, we'd get a phone call or a complaint. Hey, Village Hall's complaining again, diesel exhaust fumes. Gotta shut the doors, make sure it's not a problem. I get it. It stinks. It causes health issues. I don't want to be in it. I'm sure they don't want to be in it either. Well, Chief Decker fixed it. Now we can safely have the doors open and interact with the citizens of this town, interact with yourselves when you come up to talk to us, but that's not often. He provided a plan to make it safer for us. He also bought and or the Fire Department, but underneath the leadership and direction of Chief Decker purchased new fire gear. Fire gear that had, again, when Chief Decker wasn't here, had holes in it, was fifteen, twenty years old. First off, that's against the National Fire Protection Agents or Administration, I believe it is. It's against the requirements. Second off, it's unsafe. There was a time when we didn't have enough fire gear for the people in the doors. Chief Decker fixed that. With Chief Decker's leadership and direction, they've established a plan, and by the way, let me not forget, um, the other Assistant Chiefs, Chief Centes and Chief Thompson assisted with that as well, but underneath Chief Decker's plan, leadership, and direction, he has devised a plan to obtain new fire gear. I don't know if you just read, the state of Illinois is in the process of passing a law to ban what's called PFAS within fire gear. Every new set of fire gear, if this is passed, has to be without that. And it has it now. It's cancer-causing. There's been a been a big question on truck maintenance for some reason. Okay, I I want to highlight, at least we're not Chicago, where they don't even have enough trucks to run calls because their trucks are so badly maintained. But what I really want to highlight is the working fires we had last year, again, I talked about five and how I was on four out of the five of them, and how on all five, our machines worked. They never failed us. They never stopped working. They never didn't not have water, they never pumped water. They did the job. Ladies and gentlemen, it's like pharma equipment. It breaks. These trucks are they're big, they get run hard, but it's been taken care of. And when things break, unfortunately, it might it usually is quickly fixed. Last but not least, I want to highlight Chief Decker's stability. When we found out that he wasn't gonna be renewed for his contract, and that was the plan, he said to us, I've talked with Mayor Wigginton, I'm gonna stay on until they find a replacement, not because of you, but because of us, because he believes in us. He empowers us. He doesn't have to, but he's choosing to, because he knows it's what what's best for this town, what's best for this Fire Department, and what's best for these firefighters underneath him. That's all I have. Again, like I highlighted Tuesday night, I sincerely hope that this agenda that says approval of non-renewal of appointment of Fire Chief and the Fire Chief Appointment Agreement is voted down. You have a response from every single person in this crowd, and more specifically, the firemen and the firefighters of what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Okay, um, any other public comment? Jeff, you coming up?
Yep.
No problem.
Uh, my name's Jeff Shields, fifteen oh four East Glen, also on the Fire and Police Commission currently. Uh, hard to follow up some of those speeches, but I did want to support Chief Decker. He's a good guy. I've served with him for the last twelve plus eighteen months on the Board. He's a great guy. He knows what he's doing. He's been given, I think, a lot of indecision from the Board last year. Some of you stuck to your guns with the hiring or staying volunteer, stuck to your guns. Some people liked that decision, some didn't, but you stuck to your guns. That is admirable. It is very hard to manage a department new to the town. He took on the job. He seems to know what he's doing, from my opinion. I'm not a firefighter, not in the police side. I'm learning. But these guys do know. That means a lot. Over the indecision, I think he fought through that. He always said, whatever the Board wants, I'll do. And it flip-flopped, and he always kept going. He kept trying to make the right decision, and more importantly, what he did was he built the department back up, the volunteers, in a year, year and a half, whatever it was. That's extremely important. That is a leader, a true leader. And it's not just him, it's the people who are here that work in the Fire Department, who support the Fire Department for years. It's the people, the citizens of Peoria Heights, who have done that. Chief Reiker mentioned safety is a huge issue, the most important issue for all of us. I don't think there's a person on the Board who wouldn't say the police, fire, water for our citizens is the most important thing. It truly is. But I think not renewing Chief Decker creates an unneeded risk, not only from somebody leading, but also what if people leave? The volunteers who have now come forward and put us in a better position, what if they leave? You're back to square one. And we're in in two years, are we gonna start talking about Peoria again? Hopefully not. And if we did, I sup I support, if that had to happen, I support it. I don't want it, but I support it. I'm sure I'm getting some eyes on that, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, safety is the most important thing. You gotta take care of things. I ask the question, are we better today than what we were before Chief Decker took over? Hell, yeah. Hell, yeah. I don't think anybody can deny that. To me, what's the most important is, I think, three past Fire Chiefs with tremendous experience and respect in the community have gotten up the other night and said, this is wrong. This guy needs to continue. The firefighters, thank God what they do, and I appreciate it, and every one of us should appreciate it, have gotten up and said, across the Board, we support Chief Decker. Let me repeat that. Three chiefs with the experience said, we support Chief Decker. The firefighters that actually do the job, know the job, said, we support Chief Decker. Fairly important. You should listen to these people. If there were issues with Chief Decker, have they been documented? Have you sat down with him? Have you gone over that? I don't know that. I would like for you guys to answer that. If there's something out there that we don't know, okay, we I have not heard that. People have not heard that, and it's important to get that information out. Lastly, I, to me, leadership and managing a department like this, it's very important, they work for the Board, I believe. You must have a plan. My question was, was there a clear plan written out? Was it documented? Did you sit down with him every quarter? Did you measure the items that were put on that document? Did you work through those issues? If you didn't, shame on the administration, because that's on you. He works for you. That is in Management 101. Please make sure there's a plan, and I'm not sure if there was, and if there was, I'll back off of that, but I don't know if there was. The last thing is, and it was brought up today. The last thing is, and it was brought up today, if there's a few individuals who are disgruntled, listen to them, document it, work with them, work with the chief, work with whoever is running an organization, and figure out the best plan forward. Do not, do not let people like that influence you to the point where you make a bad decision. Do not let them decide what happens with leadership, because it undercuts them now, you may win in the short run now, but in the long run, it's a disaster. Because you will undercut the next leader, whether it's a police chief, if it's a fire chief, superintendent of the streets, or whatever. All I would say is, going forward, just some of my ideas, some of my thoughts, I support Chief Decker. He seems to have done a fantastic job, and I'm sure there's things that he's fallen down on. Maybe some bad cards that were dealt in certain situations, budget, whatever. But in my opinion, the guy's done a very nice job. We should be happy to keep him. And I agree with Chief Walters. Let's come up with a compromise. Six months, twelve months, put a better plan in place, measure the metrics, measure what's important to you guys, and also the citizens, what we all deserve, and work that plan. So, my two cents.
Thank you, Jeff.
I've got one more thing if I can. I, I have, I keep hearing, I, I can't speak to personnel issues, and I know you guys can't either. That stuff is private, and that's fine. But I, I keep hearing about safety of the equipment, and it, it, I don't know that you guys know this, but me and my guys designed and built that ladder from the ground up, I got the blueprints and the specs at home. Six fifty-two, which is a Pierce truck, nineteen ninety-two, I got pictures of me sitting in that truck on the assembly line before the body was even on it. And we used to do all of our own maintenance. I've changed oil in every one of those trucks except for that brand-new one. Changed oil in it, laying on my back underneath it, changing filters. I've been elbow-deep in every one of those trucks, I can tell you how they all work. I could probably go down there and pump fifty-four and fifty-two with my eyes shut. And I, I, if, if there is something wrong, please, I'm begging you, take, take Greg, take me, take us both, show us, I'll be the first person to get up here and say, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. I'll be the first one. Show me what's wrong, I know what's wrong, I know what's right, I know how they operate, so does Greg. I, I just, I know you can't discuss the personnel issues and stuff, and that's fine, but, you know, if you can show me some malfeasance or something that the equipment's not taking care of, the building's not being taken care of, show me. That, that, and that shouldn't be private. That should be, everybody wants to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, any other comments?
I don't have a comment, I have something that Ray, and I know won't give an answer. You've heard from all of us, our victims. Why can we not hear what went behind your decision to?
And I, as soon as we're done, Ray, you will get an, I think, I think the, the trustees, the board will have an opportunity to, to speak their mind. But again, this is, it's kind of like, you guys have a monologue, then we get a monologue, it's not a dialogue, it's a monologue. So it's, it's kind of like, you talk to us, we talk to you, and then, and then that's kind of it, so. But yeah. But I, I, you're going to, you're, you get your piece, then they get their piece. Diana?
Diane Close, eighteen fifteen East Terraceville Lane. I just wanted to, I just wanted to reiterate. Sorry, Diane Close, eighteen fifteen East Terraceville Lane. I just wanted to reiterate what I said a couple days ago, and I know it was long-winded. That's how it is for, for me, but a few points. Remember that, that feeling in your gut. I'm going to tell you something very quickly about something that happened, I don't know, about fifteen, eighteen years ago, was a decision that was made in this area, actually right up there, by a lot of firefighters, that instead of doing things the way they should've and taking time and reevaluating everything, I get to regret for the rest of my life, behavior of following a lot of firemen up those stairs and dropping boots. It's not something you take lightly. It put a tarnish on somebody's reputation. It caused a lot of chaos in this building. Because decisions were made on hearsay, decisions were made in emotional states, and unfairness. I will live with that the rest of my life. I can apologize, but I will still live with that. So what I'm talking to you today about is, once again, if you're just not sure, don't do it. And if you are sure, why are you so sure that your decision is the right answer? And are you truly willing to listen to others that actually know? I think your crowd would be a lot, lot, larger today if there was more notice, and I understand you followed the protocol and the laws about the twenty-four-hour notice. Wow, that's all he gets. That's all he gets. I'm lucky today, it's not my shift day, and I was able to be, actually, it is my shift day, but I'm on vacation. I'm willing to come in here and support him. I have no problem telling you things when things are bad, I'll tell you when things are good, and they've been good recently. So just think about your decisions, because every time you see these people and others, it's going to be a constant reminder, did I do what was in the best interest? And I am looking forward to hearing what you guys are able to tell us. But do not base your decisions, please, on what other people are saying behind backs, behind closed doors, and please don't have an agenda that you think is going to work better, without actually looking through that and talking with people. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diana. Okay. Comments from the audience? Going once? Twice? Comments are closed. I will now move to approval of non-renewal of appointment of fire chief and fire chief employment agreement. Counsel, do we need just a motion here, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Regular motion and second.
I'll entertain a motion for the non-renewal of appointment of fire chief and fire chief employment agreement. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion by Trustee Kazam and a second by Trustee Steinwettel for the non-renewal of appointment of fire chief and fire employment agreement. I'll now open the floor to any debate or comments. Does anyone want to speak first?
I'm happy to speak first, Mayor. I'm going to restate what I've said in executive session to my fellow trustees. Prior to the non-renewal of the contract of Chief Decker, I have had zero contact and conversation with any firefighter, any person on the fire department with regard to disgruntled employees' stories or anything of that sort. After the non-renewal of the contract of Chief Decker, the thing that troubles me the most is that there seems to be a narrative that's been put forth, perpetuated from Chief Decker, which I think is damaging, I think it's reckless. We have been accused of being high school students, approaching problems in a manner of gossip. I heard chit-chat, gossip, hearsay, all of these things, and I can tell you, I would never make a decision based on information that is chit-chat or hearsay. I will only make a decision based on fact and what I feel is the right move for this community. So, I just wanted to say that, and I've, I know I've said that to my fellow trustees, and I'd like to say that to the community.
Thank you, Trustee Kazam. Any other question, comments, debate?
I will speak. I see a lot of you in the audience here that I've, for lack of a better term, grown up with. I respect you, and I still, some of you I still reach out to for wisdom, especially on things like this. Decisions like this aren't easy. And with that being said, I jotted down, well, some notes of what I wanted to say this morning, because I do believe in transparency. That's one of the hindrances of, I think, the process that we have, is that there isn't enough transparency when sometimes there needs to be. So for, so this morning, just bear with me, I'm going to go through something. Kind of walk you through a little bit of my thinking on this, and at least you understand how I come to the decision I, I have come to this morning. So before I begin, I want to make something very clear. I'm one of you. I live here, my family lives here. I shop at the same stores, drive the same roads, rely on the same first responders. I don't sit up here as someone separate from this community. I sit here as your neighbor, a resident, and a fellow citizen who cares deeply about the sa, safety and strength of our village. With that being said, I want to speak from a place of experience and deep respect. As a former police officer, I know firsthand the gravity of the situation that our first responders deal with on a daily basis. I've been the one doing CPR on a mother lying on the kitchen floor while her children are screaming and hitting me in the back begging me to save her. And I felt the tremendous relief when firefighters burst through the door to help. I've been there pulling bodies out of cars, standing shoulder to shoulder with fire personnel, some of you in this room today, in the worst moments our community members will ever experience. Because of that, I don't take any of this lightly. I know what's at stake, I've lived through it. And because I've lived through it, I've always tried to extend grace. I've always tried to take a look at situations through constructive and positive lens. As I sit here today, I also have a responsibility to my community, to our taxpayers, to our firefighters, and to every life that depends on their service. We are at a point where we need accountability. True, consistent, and transparent accountability. We need leadership at the fire department that takes ownership, not just when things are going well, but especially when they're not. We need a leader who is fiscally responsible with the budget we pass, one point one million of taxpayer money, your money. That means being a good steward of those funds and ensuring every dollar is used in a way it protects and serves our residents. When I review our current budget, I'm deeply concerned by what I see. The funds allocated training weren't even sufficient to cover the most basic medical certifications, let alone the essential fire certifications required by the state. There are, there's also no clear plan on, or supporting, or support for ongoing training that would develop our firefighters further or add value to their skills and readiness. That's just not a budgeting oversight, it's a fundamental failure in leadership and planning. And when our firefighters are asked to perform in life-threatening situations, we must be able to say, we've given them every tool, every qualification, and every advantage we can. Right now, we can't say that. We need a leader who holds their team accountable. When mistakes are made, there has to be ownership and correction, not silence. That goes from the highest level of leadership on down. We need to know that every single piece of equipment, every truck, every tool, and every piece of gear is not just working, but certified, documented, one hundred percent ready to go. Our firefighters are being asked to walk into burning homes, to pull our loved ones out of wrecked vehicles, and to save lives. We owe it to them to ensure they're equipped with nothing less than excellence. And yet, here we are, over a year later, with one of our fire engines still operating with a pump that does not meet certification standards. Asking the men and women of this department to go into burning buildings, potentially relying on the equipment, is not, is not only unfair, it's a betrayal of the trust we've been given to protect them and this community. We also need administrative leadership that understands the human side of this work. If a firefighter gets hurt, they should never wonder if their medical bills are going to be covered or sent to collections. They shouldn't hear from another firefighter if the workman's comp claim was never reported, as, was never reported, as I've recently been informed of. That's unacceptable, that's not how we take care of our heroes. Just hours ago, I was informed that multiple members of our fire department have not yet been registered with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Let me be clear, this is not an oversight. The consequences of this lack of registration are serious and potentially devastating. If God forbid, one of these firefighters were to fall in the line of duty, their death benefits and security of their beneficiaries and dependents could be jeopardized. We ask these men and women to put their lives in line for our, for this community. The very least we can do is return, eh, do, in return, is ensure that their service is recognized and protected by state systems that are in place to support their families in the worst-case scenario. This is not just an administrative issue, this is a moral one. And beyond all this, we need a mindset of growth in the department, a culture that's always striving to be better than the day we are before. A culture where leadership pushes the entire department to raise a bar, to lead the way, and become an example of excellence. Not heading, headhunting those that question or demand transparency. That's the standard I expect, and that's the standard our community deserves and demands. I say all this with the full weight and responsibility on my shoulders for this decision I make today. I don't take this decision lightly. I've wanted to give every opportunity for improvement, for leadership to rise to the moment. Having given two years, I have to be honest with myself and all of you. I don't believe that this progress is being made. And with the stakes this high, I cannot continue to support renewing the contract. May God bless you. He's been here two years, I believe?
He hasn't been here two years.
Okay. Is it? Okay, then one year, I'm sorry.
And he's enrolled people in the positions of what?
Okay, Ray. Thank, thank you. Remember, we got to have, we got to have monologue, monologue, so I appreciate it, Ray. Any other questions, comments? Trustee DeVore?
I want to thank you guys all for being here, I mean, it's no secret to anyone that I have never been able to serve this community in a first responder type of situation. But one thing I do want to say is, sometimes it's a little insulting to sit up here, and for some, for those of us trustees that have fought for six years in defense of this department and public safety, to think that we're making decisions based on hearsay is sometimes a little hard punch to the gut. I find myself to be a professional, and I would never just take the word of another human being to make an irrational decision. Trustee Weisenberg and I have fought so hard, and actually have been in the minority of this board on multiple occasions to fight for public safety and this fire department. When we were first elected, the fire department's budget was two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and it sits today at almost one point one million dollars. That's a three hundred and thirteen percent increase. I have made it very clear in multiple occasions, in public and private settings, asking questions to ensure that we can provide this department with everything that it needs. I mean, I have come at these assistant chiefs very hard when Chief Decker has not been here, asking, you know, for clarification. I've asked Chief Decker himself, are you giving, are you giving us all of the facts for us to be able to provide you with all the funds you need to make this department run where we want it to be? If we're sitting up here asking this department to run it a hundred percent, but we're only giving you money to run it fifty percent, that's not fair. And I have stood behind that time and time again. But again, I have not worked in this industry, I cannot answer all of the questions, and I need professionals like Chief Decker, the assistant chiefs, and all of you to, you know, help educate us to what those line items may need to be. So I've asked Chief Decker on multiple occasions, please tell me that we have enough money to do this. As you heard Trustee Steinwettel say, we are not even close to having enough money, so we're sending these firefighters into fires, and we can't provide them training, we can't provide them this equipment. That's scary to me, because as we've stood here and fought, like, I will fight for the money for them, like, I will continue to push administration to find money so this department gets to function at the same level that every other department in this community gets to function at. I do want to say that I think Chief Decker is a wonderful human, and I, after talking to the people I know in this industry, know that the excitement that he brings to first responders and getting people included and joining into this industry is unmatched. Out of respect for him and every other single vill- Out of respect for him and every other single village employee, I refuse to publicly go down and nitpick every single conversation that's had, and I've had a lot of people ask me what's been said in executive session or whatever, but it is a personnel matter, and I want his future to look bright. We've allowed him to come through this with the narrative, and all it's done is slung mud at us that we're only listening to hearsay when that's not the reasons that we made these decisions. I would like to think that you know where those of us who support the department stand, and I feel like I've tried to make myself as clear as possible that I will continue to support public safety as a whole and this fire department, and none of my decisions were based on hearsay.
Thank you, Trustee DeVore. Any other?
I would add, I agree with her. I think everybody knows in this room that I would go to the mat to defend our firefighters and our fire department in this village. This is, this is not something that we take lightly. And at the same time, Chief Decker, I agree, is a wonderful human being. I think he is a terrific asset to the community, and I also think that he has touched a lot of people's lives in an extremely positive way, and for that, we are thankful. But the decision that we're making today is based off of what we're seeing on our end. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, it's not something I take lightly.
Thank you, Trustee Steinwaddle. Any other?
I'm gonna say a couple of things.
Trustee Riker.
I am going to be voting in favor of keeping Chief Decker today. I, and I, I'm not, I'm not doing it for that. He does bring stability, which is something that, over the course of the last few years, we have missed, and we have not had. And stability can't be bought, stability can't be, it can't be brought in just on a whim. It has to be, it has to be taught, it has to be learned, it has to be respected. And in, I just don't find, even in the things that we have discussed as a board, anything that we can't fix by working with him. Anything that we can't get on him a little bit more, or micromanage it ever so slightly until we can assure... No leader is perfect. Our, our new mayor, he's not perfect, our new trustees aren't perfect, our, our veteran trustees aren't perfect, our former fire chiefs aren't perfect. And you aren't a leader until you learn from mistakes that you have made. And I, I guarantee you, being in this position right now, that Decker, Decker probably has figured out, he's made some mistakes, and he wants to learn from them. This is his first time being a chief, this is his first time missing things, and as a person that, that is in charge of a lot of things for our school district, there are days that I've missed things. And thank goodness that I didn't get my contract pulled out from under me because I didn't do something that either I forgot to do, or didn't mean to do, or, you know, whatever, whatever comes about. But I sit here and I, I listen to history. I listen to former fire chiefs that say, "He's doing a good job as a fire chief." They've, they've not sat in our position, they have not sat on the board, they have not looked at budgets, they've looked at budgets, they have not sat here and, and heard the things that we have heard and the information that we have been given, and they still say, "He's doing a good job." Now, does he need some education in leadership? Yes. And I, I think, Trustee Steinwaddle, I think you're doing a good job of trying to communicate with him and trying to build that. I think it's just, it's a relationship that has to be built, it's not just gonna come out of thin air. I think our former fire chiefs are willing to come up here and help him, and that says loads. You know, they're not willing to just wash their hands of the fire department because of decisions that we make and how we make them. They want to, if, if it means keeping him, they'll, they'll be up here helping if he asks for, for help. He has, what, 10? And the other night, there were 15 firefighters sitting in our audience telling us they want to keep him. And if they didn't want us to keep him, then they should've not shown up, because it confuses us. We hear, we, as a village board, hear things from people, and most of the time, I'd say 90% of the time, it's not good stuff. We only, people only complain. People never come up and praise the good job. They only complain because they want something to change. All right? And, and that is the one thing that I have said throughout this whole thing, is that if, if you support Decker, if you support Chief Decker in coming and staying our fire chief, then you have to come out and tell us. I feel protected. I feel protected. I've, I haven't, I haven't given a second thought to our fire department and, and feeling protected in the last year and a half, since I, since I sat up here, since I voted to, to hire Chief Decker. Have there been some communication issues? Yeah. Have, have questions kind of gone unanswered, or, you know, kind of tampered with a little, or, that's the wrong word, misled, maybe? And that's fine, but that must mean we're not asking the right questions, we're not asking them directly enough. But I do feel that any mistakes that this board has found in the last year under Chief Decker can be fixed by Chief Decker and by us, and with our guidance as a new board, as a direction. But I do think that not renewing his contract will bring instability to our fire department, and I just don't want to see that happen. So.
Thank you, Trustee Riker. Any other comments?
Mayor, can I speak, please?
Sure. Assistant Chief Santes?
For the sake of transparency, I just want to say that this village about lost its fire department two years ago, and we've made a 180 from then. And when we talk about budget not being enough and training or maintenance and stuff like that, as it was stated earlier, things do break quite frequently. I had another breakdown last night at the end of my shift. We're working through that, it's holiday weekend, it's gonna get addressed as soon as possible. You know, we talk about training for firemen, everybody on the department, besides four members, has a BOF certification. If you would've looked at...
What is that?
BOF is the minimum standard for the state level, to be a fireman legally. The EMS was almost completed, we're gonna have everybody pretty much done here in the next couple of months. All this started, it kind of slowed, slowed the process down, and in terms of money to pay for that, it was, we basically had to compensate ICZ, because Chief Decker is an instructor there, and it was gonna manage to, it wasn't gonna come out of our budget to train seven to nine members. So, we are this close to being fully trained. Everything was delayed because of what's proceeded over the last couple of weeks. So, we're very close to being everything that this village needs to be at that standard. We just need a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, well, if there is no, is there any further comment, debate? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor for non-renewal of appointment of fire chief and fire chief employment agreement. So I'll ask Clerk Turner to call the roll.
Trustee Steinwaddle?
Nay.
Trustee Kazam?
No.
You do not?
Oh, I, I approve, yes. I'm sorry.
So just, Counsel, do you mind just walking through what a yea or nay vote would mean?
Sure. Little, little different than usual. We're usually voting to approve things. This is worded as a non-renewal, so a yea vote would be approving the non-renewal, so it's kind of the double negative, but a no vote would be to reject the non-renewal, which would retain the employee.
Thank you. So with that, Trustee Steinwaddle, I'm just curious, what's?
Aye.
Okay.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Nay.
That's five to one, Mayor.
Okay, so that motion carries. I did put an executive session on the agenda in case. I will entertain a motion to dispense with the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to dispense with the executive session by Trustee Weisenberg, seconded by Trustee DeVore. Any debate?
So what was the final decision?
Just a second, we're almost there. So, all those in favor, or, would you roll, I'm sorry, would you call the roll for that?
Of course, Mayor. Trustee Steinwaddle?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
For executive session.
Thank you. Trustee Weisenberg?
Oh, I'm sorry, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Trustee Weisenberg, seconded by Trustee DeVore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, what happened, Ray, is they voted to not renew the contract.
You wasted your time. And we're willing to think about him over budget, who coined the term up here, rescind a budget that had been borrowed and green-pollined? But they backed up and resented it.
I know we were going to rescind the decision.
How does that make you feel if whoever owned your building, or your business, or whatever, other group of guys just rescinded it and said, "Now, you work and I'll decide if that's a budget or not." And if you're over and under, I'm gonna hold you accountable, and your, your livelihood is dependent upon it.
My decision to rescind the full-time firefighters had nothing to do with Decker and what his livelihood was.
You made a comment just then that about him and his budget.
That I'm trying to give him more money. That I'm trying to give him more money.
You're not clear then, Sarah, not clear at all.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that I didn't speak that clearly. My thing is, is I want to know exactly...